Bob, make sure the microphone on the laptop is on.
Can you hear me now, Purp.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Good, 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 good. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you know, I got to call in to Doug. It's not their... It's not the attorney's job to pull things from our agenda. Okay, good morning. Welcome to Monday Morning V O C C. Kathy, I'll just turn it over and let you go.
Okay, well, Suzie's going to present.
Okay.
The financials.
Good morning, Suzie Moon, Finance Manager. So both of the departments that we're going to go over today, they're supported by the general fund, so their budgeted revenues will not equal or exceed their budgeted expenses. So the first one is the commissioners for goods and services and miscellaneous. They both had a budget of zero. They have brought in roughly $60 each, and these are charges that we're charging for public records requests. The reason why they show up under two different categories is just because they are coded to do two different bars numbers, but it's the same type of activity. We are going to be doing our quarter three budget amendment where we look at all budgeted revenues and true those up, so I anticipate that we will correct these during that amendment.
This is an easy one, baby. How long ago did we start the fees?
November last year.
So it's been, okay.
In the first part of the year, we started putting miscellaneous, but then we put everything into miscellaneous, so we wanted to be able to identify what is public.
What is actually coming in from that? Okay.
Next slide. So for personnel, they have a budget of 913,000. So far, they've expended 426,000, so they are right on target. Currently, they have seven FTE and no open positions. Supplies, they're also on target, so they have a budget of $2,800 and have spent roughly 1,500 so far. And for services, they have a budget of 138,000 and have spent 92,000, so they are slightly exceeding their target. That's largely due to internal service billings totaling 73,000 that were paid in January. Moving on to Board of Equalization, so they don't have any revenue budgeted this year, and so far, they haven't brought in any revenue. For expenses, they have a personnel budget of just shy of $22,000. So far, they've spent 6,500 of that budget. I was looking at what we spent last year. I'm anticipating we probably won't spend the entire 21,000. Last year, we spent about 10,000. They have half of an FTE currently with another half of an FTE open. Supplies, they have a $200... Oh.
And that FT is basically we, Purvy, spend some time working with Board of Equalization, right?
Hmm.
Yeah.
It's partly purvey, and then they also calculate a percentage for the actual members, the members.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
So I think each one of the members, advisory members are like put in the budget at .25 or something like that. So that's why it's an odd number.
Oh, okay.
So we have a $200 supplies budget, and so far, they haven't spent anything this year, so they're technically under target. Services has a budget of $2,500 and so far has spent $532. 486 of what was spent is related to the IT internal service billings.
You piqued my curiosity on the members of the Board of Equalization. We actually assign an FTE to them. Do we do that with all our boards out of curiosity, or why is this one different?
Only this one because it's paid.
So actually, Board of Equalization has a paid position on it? Per day for the work they do? Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah.
And that's all I have for you.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Purvy, the clerk for the BOE, and I have a presentation.
Okay.
The Board of Equalization, it's where the property owners who believe their property has been incorrectly assessed by the Calis County assessors, they have the right to come in and appeal to us for a change in assessment valuation. The petitioner must file within 30 days of the date on the notice of value, which they get in their mail, and this is usually issued by the assessor's office. The appeal form can be found on the BOE website, and it can be submitted electronically, by mail, or in person. The BOE clerk of the board resides in the commissioner's office, and I usually maintain records of meetings. I am the primary point of contact. I schedule the hearings, and I provide administrative support to them and ensures compliance and make sure that they do the trainings and we're doing everything right. And I also assist property owners with the appeal process. So, next slide. And this is what the appeal process is. When they get their NOV, they can decide to appeal, and they have the 30-day deadline. Again, they can submit it electronically, mail, or they can go in person. And when they submit it, I review it and make sure it's compliant, which means that they filed it correctly and make sure that they meet the requirement of what the DOR has set for these forms. An example of it is that if they say that the taxes are too much and the value is too much, that would be noncompliant because there's no supporting statement, like it's... The value is high, but like my balcony is deteriorating, like that would be considered compliant. And if they have supporting documents or a picture of their deteriorating balcony, then we would accept it. And then after that, I would set the hearing date. We usually give them like a three-month... Uh, not like a, what is it? A three-month notification of their hearing date and so that they have time to like gather up their additional documents because those have to be submitted 21 days prior to their hearing, so we want to make sure to give them enough time. And then usually throughout that process, property owners can decide to withdraw, which happens often, or the assessors can stipulate, which means that they come to an agreement of a new value without having to do the hearing. And then if they do go through the hearing, we conduct the hearing, and after that, we do a board order, which is the deadline is 45 days after the hearing date. And then the petitioners can appeal to the State Board of Tax Appeals if they don't agree with our board's decision. So, yeah. Any questions?
On the compliance stuff, a person just can't send a note into you and say, hey, my property taxes are too high, fix it, right?
Yeah.
There has to be some kind of supporting thing.
Yeah.
If they don't provide anything, does the... I mean, when you put it in front of the Board of Equalization, do they care if there's, hey, we had five of them, but they never became compliant? They were just statements? Or do we even worry about it?
Uh, what was that? Sorry.
If, when the Board of Equalization finally hears whatever gets to them,
Uh huh.
do they care if, hey, maybe I had five of them over the time, but they never got to the point where they were compliant? They were just statements? Do they even care? Is anything we worry about?
Well...
Not saying we should, I'm just...
They are noncompliant. I do send them a letter and give them a chance, like...
Do try to work with them and...
Yeah, but sometimes they don't really respond back, so then I give them another letter stating that, you know, like you have two more weeks to send this in and make sure it's compliant, but after that, I usually just let it go, so...
That works. I think you probably get some initial reactions when somebody opens up a bill and goes, what? Like I did this year.
Uh, next slide. And this is the noncompliant appeals. Our target this year's... Our target condition this year is to ensure that all appeals are submitted correctly. Actual condition, petitioners often struggle to understand the proper appeal process, resulting in their petitions being deemed noncompliant. In 2022, we had about 18% of those, 2023, 3%, and 2024 was about 12%, and our goal this year is less than 10%. And to meet those, our target condition, I've improved the BOE website for a more user-friendly experience. um, I've improved the BOE website for a more user-friendly experience. Um, and then the online form includes examples of common mistakes to avoid, along with a multi-step guide to help them complete it correctly. And then, like I've mentioned, a letter is sent to the petitioner outlining the incorrect section and providing instructions on how to correct the appeal form, so. And these are our board members. Um, one of them is starting their first year this year. His name is Cameron Svenson. Um, and then our two other ones were from last year, and they're also kind of new, so. Um, the RCW requires us to have three board members appointed by the Board of Commissioners, and if we don't have at least two board members, then we will need to have a hearing examiner to fill in the spot. Uh, the BOE hears and resolves disputes regarding property tax assessments and operates entirely separate from the assessor's office. Uh, the BOE is responsible for ensuring that all properties are valued a hundred percent of market value and that comparable properties are assessed at comparable values, so. And then the very last slide is board member training. Um, our target condition is board members properly trained to address property value disputes with knowledge and fairness. Our actual condition, um, we have two board members to have completed their new BOE member training through the Department of Revenue this June, and usually after three years of serving, and if they sign up again, they'll have to do the senior BOE member training. Um, and then we have a new board member, and he's scheduled to complete the new BOE member training next year. And our obstacle, obstacles is that newer board members often lack the historical knowledge and training necessary to handle certain matters. Um, board members are often appointed after the DOR provides training and requiring them to perform their duties without the benefit of this training until the following year. Um, our next steps is that when the assessors release the notice of value and send them out, uh, we will have our preparation meetings. And then during those three meetings, we'll have new board introductions, swearing of oath, and the voting of the chairman and the vice chair. And then we will have to review the BOE policy and procedure because, again, we do have new members, so we kinda, I kinda wanna like, let them know what's happening and to make sure that we're following compliance, and also discuss hearing procedures so that they'll be ready and know what to do and what not to do. Um, lastly, uh, the recommendation is to change the BOE member's expiration date to the end of April so that we have enough time to find and appoint new members and make sure that by the time they're appointed, they can do the member, the new member training in June, so they can. So when the new, uh, assessment year starts, we, they know what to do, and there's not a lack of knowledge or training, so, yeah. And that's about it.
So there's no, currently, there's no set time as to when we appoint these, when they're?
It's, uh, July, but the training is in June, so we need to have it before that.
Is there anything in the interim that they can use to gather information to train prior to that training so that they at least know their?
Um, I usually send them the training documents that the DOR uses, but again, it's, it's hard to understand them when the DOR isn't explaining them, and also, they do a lot of breakout groups where you can talk about certain situations, and that helps them out too. But I also give them the DOR, uh, the Department of Revenue manual, and it's like, an eighty-page manual, so, um, it's just better to go to the training and to like, cause it's a two-day training, and it's just to like, you know, help them understand everything, so.
If the training only takes place in June, and we, like, we just appointed somebody, but they're not gonna get trained till next June?
Yeah.
Are they allowed to sit on the board and make decisions between now and then?
Yes, uh, it's kind of unclear in the manual, but, um, as long as they have the training documents and they've reviewed that, they can go on.
The training documents that you send them?
Yeah, and the manual. And it kinda helps that the other two are, uh, realtors, so they kinda know what the comparable values are and what the market, uh, what the, the market is, the housing market, so, um, that kinda makes it easy for them, so.
Well, that definitely sounds like we need to change the date then. That's a long time to go without.
Yeah, but at least you got a couple mentors on there that got him.
Yeah, it is a long time, so that's why we're wanting to move the pointing.
What, what's involved with that? Is it just us saying, yeah, that makes sense? Is it that simple? It'd just be a change in policy? I think what I'm hearing here, if you want to work on that, we're not opposed to that. Couple, couple comments, uh, one I wanted to give a shout out because she sat on this for, I don't know how long, but she did a good job, and it was a gal by the name of Laura Yoder, and, uh, her and her husband are, are moving, so she's, uh, not, no longer on this, but she did a good job on this for, for quite a few years, and, and so I just want to acknowledge that. And, and two, we kinda took this on and, and, and it was kind of a hodgepodge, really kind of a mess as to what you're, what you're supposed to do with this. And I know we asked Purvy to, uh, kinda take it on and, and lead this thing, and, and, and she's done a wonderful job of getting us in, in, back into compliance and doing what we're supposed to do, so I appreciate that. I've been here just long enough to know that you, you worked through that and, and did that, so thank you for that.
And yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. There must be, I think it carries a little more weight in, in RCW because I actually have to swear these people in, uh, when they take those positions.
Are we on miscellaneous yet for?
Sure.
For this morning? So I have some miscellaneous, um, Kathy Fink Baxter, Finance Director, and, um, I just wanted to, we're, our budget, um, is open in Budget Boss, and it's due August eleventh. And so one of the items that, um, I'd like to make sure that we get some additional instructions to our departments about is if they have positions funded on the mental health tax. And so my recommendation to the board is that, um, their budgets will not have those positions in, um, automatically in or funded, and that instead, they would have to come to the board during their workshop or during, we're gonna have a special workshop, um, to talk about mental health tax as well on the sixteenth. I've slated it for part of that day. And, but I'd like to just make sure that my guidelines to the departments have the board's, um, approval to notify them that their positions are not in because there isn't sufficient funding for the entire twenty-six, twenty-seven biennium to fund it off of what's remaining in the mental health tax right now. And, um, but they would still have options available to them. For example, if they have a vacant position, they, and they're willing to convert that vacant position to the same position that was funded with the mental health tax, for example, they would be able to do that, um, through the process of our budget and requesting that. They would have to request. So that way, we have an audit trail of what things are changing and everything through our budget process. And then also because, um, the jail has the most significant amount of the mental health tax, they have about half of it right now. They have a little bit over one-point-three million, but most of that is to help provide the medical treatment and, and program. Um, and so that's pretty much a mandated item, and if we were to keep that in the budget, under the, what's remaining in the mental health tax, um, it would carry us through twenty-six and I'm, I'm pretty sure all the way through twenty-seven. Um, and so I was gonna leave that one in the budget, um, since it was more of a mandated thing, and they have two positions, um, on that, two, um, I think jail, um, officers. I'm not sure if it's sergeants or officers. So the only exception would be that I would look at jail and treat them a little bit differently because of the mandated nature, but everyone else, their positions are, will not be in the budget, and they have to turn around and request them or come up with a strategy. And, um, my memo would give them about, there's four different strategies. Um, one, one is move them to a vacant position. Another is if they have money in another line that they want to reduce and use that fund to, to fund that position. Um, third one would be move it to a different fund if they have something else available, um, or, um, if they want to explore the option that it might be available to them to fund off of opioid, but that too is a limited-term funding source. And then, um, to also look at, um, if they have a grant that they could apply for to fund the position, or, um, and then finally, to work with HR if they need to do a reduction in force, they just don't have any other options, so.
Well, I kinda briefly read through it this morning, but in a nutshell, it just, basically what we're saying is the RCW mandated stuff, we're gonna put priority on, and we're gonna have to work through what's available for the, for the, the rest, is that a quick way to say it?
Yeah, and, and go through a process if they, um, if they want, it's not gonna be in their budget, but if they want it to still be in their budget, they need to come up with a strategy and present that to the board.
Along these lines, but a different topic. Did I, do I, I don't know if I dreamt this or if this actually happened. Did the state say that they were gonna start paying for the, the Medicaid recipients in the jail while they're in there? Cause right now, we cover them once they come in.
What, once they come in, the state doesn't pay? That's gonna ask for a long time, and I don't know if it's.
I don't know if that passed.
Yeah, there's, there's a program, um, though, that, that Marin probably could tell you about. Um, it's called, um, it's more related to before they release, um, an inmate, there's an initiative to be able to get them their medications and things like that. It's called reentry, um, and right now, it's a, um, and that one qualifies, that one, the working of that is to get the Medicaid, so, but, but I'm not sure. So Marin would probably have to answer that question, and I don't know if she's on.
Yeah, I see, I see she's on, maybe she wants to.
Wishful thinking on my part.
She wants to.
Hi, good morning. I had stepped away from my desk, so I'm not sure what you were asking of me.
If the, uh, state is gonna step in and cover the Medicaid recipients in the jail while we're holding them?
Shoot. Sorry, I'm trying to turn my volume up, just a second. Okay, can you say that again?
If the state is going to go ahead and take over the Medicaid recipients when we're holding them in the jail?
So we need to get through our medical contract process first before we go back to that project. So we're currently out to bid for our medical contract. We'll conclude that process by October one, and then we're going to get back into the loop on the Medicaid transformation project. So I would anticipate that to be finalized in twenty-six. So that will have an impact on our medical budget, um, in that it should be a decrease. I don't know exactly how that's going to look. Um, some counties have rolled out this month, so we will have some pretty good information by the time we're ready to, to go, is how much, uh, it will save the county.
Thank you.
And I, I think her, I think the medical portion of your budget is about two-point-five million?
That's correct.
And we don't know what the new provider's going to, um, charges will be either, so.
No, um, we've had, we have four companies that have reached out and expressed interest. Two of the companies are new companies that have picked up, um, contracts in the state of Washington, so I, we're gonna be able to reach out to those, those counties and see what those contracts look like as far as numbers. But, uh, bids are due, um, I think early August, so we'll, we'll be getting some numbers, uh, pretty, pretty soon.
Actually had four companies that.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Hurting to me.
Encouraging, encouraging to us as well, so.
So is my approach to the mental health tax, um, funding okay to give instructions to the departments? Cause, cause no matter what, I mean, we have some funding left, but it's not enough to cover everything, and it's not enough to cover everything for the full biennium. So we're gonna have to address this sooner or later.
So are we asking them to, to prioritize their, their budgets with regards to that mental health tax? And then they're gonna bring that to us, the changes that they've made through the workshop?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna start off with, none of the positions will be in the budget. And then it's up to the department to come up with their strategy. If they want to keep those positions, how they might go about that. Um, the easiest way is if they have a current vacancy, that they could convert that vacancy to the position that was funded by mental health tax. Means, it means a net of losing a position in their budget, but it means, um, retaining a person that was on mental health tax. The one that's large, the largest impact is the, um, drug court program. Um, they do, they currently, I believe, have one vacancy, but they have approximately, I think, six FTEs on the, um, somewhere in that range, five or six positions on the mental health tax. And the only position they have that's not is the, is the manager. The manager's on general funds.
So we're asking the courts to go ahead and eliminate those positions right off the get-go?
Right, and then work through strategies of determining what they can do instead. They're the ones that are gonna have probably the biggest, um, obstacle in coming up with a alternative strategy to fund those positions. But we're saying that they can come back and ask for them in, like, in the normal process of requesting, um, a position off a general fund. But general fund is, um, I'm trying to reduce expenses, so it's counterproductive right now. So I don't know how that's gonna go. They're, they're the ones that are gonna have the largest challenge. Almost all the other ones, when we looked, they had at least one vacancy that they could possibly switch out if they want to. Um, the sheriff's office has two FTEs that are, um, behavioral, um, health-related, um, positions. They're fully funded from the mental health tax. Um, his example is that currently, I, I can only see one vacancy right now, and it's a deputy, and they may be in the process of filling that, but that's not enough to fund both of those positions. So each, each department's unique, so.
It's, it'll be, obviously, it's a tough process for them because they have to prioritize where they think what's working the best versus what they can expand. That's, that's the difficult part.
But, but they'll have an opportunity to get before the board of commit, before you, this group, uh, that if they want on the sixth, September sixteenth, or whatever day their department, um, um, is assigned in the schedule, because we have, I think I counted, I have about fourteen different slots for departments to sign up for, for presenting their budgets.
Well. I think your approach is, is reasonable. It's not easy, but it's reasonable.
It's not an easy.
It's, it's not a surprise. We've been seeing stuff coming down the road that we're gonna have to make some kind of adjustment.
Okay. Um, and then the next item that I wanted to discuss was, um, y'all had asked me to come back, um, with suggestions. And I gotta hand this out, I'm sorry. I have more than enough. I have more than enough. I have, have some here, but I don't have any public audience in person. So I had, from the retreat, we had several items, you know, ideas and concepts. And so the ones that I'm, I'm recommending that we implement or look at investigating further, the first one's pretty easy, vendor prompt payment discounts. We already have, as we discussed, Carolyn's office, the auditor's office was already doing this with some of the vendors. Not all vendors will allow this, but if you pay, for example, prompt pay within 10 days, you get a one or 2% discount. So what I'm recommending is that we ask all departments to try and, and investigate implementing this if they can. I mean, I'm, not everybody can, I'm sure, but at least we put out the directive that, that they submit which vendors they've asked. And then the second one is, this one would involve purchasing, looking at this, consolidating our copy of printer contracts. We pretty much have just two vendors, I believe. But when you typically consolidate, you look at, is your machine right sized as well? Are you paying for an expensive machine and only utilizing it once or twice a year on that special pro, special usage? And can we, can we share as well? And so I think we have an opportunity that we possibly could. Just in the third floor, we have, we have several printers that are on lease contracts. And so maybe we could share instead of, and eliminate some. But that would be a process that purchasing would initiate and look at. And also having a, having the vendor look at our actual usage on the machines to determine if we have the right machine. Is there, should I go through every one of them or what would you like me to do?
Well, I've just scanned down one and all of them. And the only one that gives me a, a little heartburn is, I know, you know, we're, we're talking about, we're not gonna fill some positions and it, it's possible some people could not be here that are here now. But I struggle with changing what we do for those still here, like the benefits we offer. So this next, the last one, I, I struggle with that a little bit.
The, the last one?
Next to last, the bonus stays are cruel.
Oh, the bonus days are cruel.
You know, the thing, I, I kind of, things, those are benefits we've set in for our people that, that work for us. And so I.
My, my, the suggestion is not, I, I, maybe it's not written well, but the suggestion is not to do away with it. But instead of doing lump sum on their anniversary date, they would get that benefit. It would be basically spread over the year. So instead of getting eight hours or 24 hours all at one time, it would be, you'd get extra hours, you know, the next month and thereafter for a period of time.
How does that benefit us? Cause we're still paying it out over the year.
Yeah, and well, and I, I'm not sure, but it just, it creates the, if we're doing it that way, instead of the 24 that comes all at one time. What we heard in the retreat was it comes in and then immediately they're over the, they're 248 hours immediately.
So this is like coming from departments telling us they see it accrue this differently?
Well, this was one of the suggestions that was brought up. Yeah.
There she is. Savannah, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioner Savannah Clement, Public Services. I just wanted to provide a little bit of context. It was discussed at that budget workshop. And to give you guys a little background, because it's a lump sum drop in to people's vacation time, Kathy's correct, there is an immediate need to take vacation time when it's not necessarily needed. So people are either gone for two weeks straight, so they don't lose their time. Or we're having to pay that out when they leave. And when we do termination payouts, they're called termination payouts, but it's really when anybody leaves, their bonus hours are calculated. And if somebody has an, like, an absorbent amount of bonus hours, they're getting paid that out cash at their current rate. So if you earned your bonus hours or you're out, your vacation hours, when you made less money, you're always going to get it paid out when you're making, you know, your top rate when you're leaving. And so that is an extra cost that cannot be budgeted on the departments. And so in some termination payouts, when you're calculating sick time vacation, including bonus hours that are prorated, it can be, I've done a $29,000 payout before, which is of course unbudgeted because you can't, you're not, you don't know when somebody's gonna retire or somebody's going to leave employment. So it can be a really big hit on general funds. When they're accrued monthly, people are getting them banked. So they're getting them, you know, at the same time they get their other hours. And so they're taking them or they can plan to take them. And they're not just getting a lump sum drop. We have three people right now that are forced to take vacation or they lose it because their bonus hours are coming up. And so they may not have a vacation plan or may want to be at work, but if they don't do it, then they just lose that time. So that was just kind of a little background.
So we're not taking away benefit, we're just allocating it.
Allocating it differently. And it might be able, like Savannah said, if you allocate it, spread it over the year, they might be able to utilize it instead of having it drop all at one time.
There's one other, I believe there's one bargaining group that already does it this way. They bargained to change it to this way because of the benefits to the county and I think the employees. And I, I think it's, it's sheriff or corrections, I can't remember which, which one.
Yeah.
Okay, so retirement time, will the change in this allocation affect what my retirement check's gonna be?
As far as the lump sum payout, I'm, I'm trying to think on the termination payout form. We, because bonus hours are dumped yearly, we have to do an, an average over the year based off of when you leave. So that would, I think, be limited because we're doing it at monthly. So you're not going to be, you're only gonna be owed what's left for the remainder of the year of your time served, if that makes sense. So it won't be like, oh, Commissioner Farrell, he's getting 40 bonus hours that we're going to now pay out. You would only be getting the remaining balance that you didn't already earn. So instead of 40, say you get 16, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but if you're asking the question, will it, will it figure into there? Cause remember it's your, I think the formula is, it looks at your five years of compensation to determine.
Is that, is it an average?
It's, yeah, that's.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, that payout doesn't calculate into the, I don't believe, into the retirement number. I don't know, but HR would have to answer that question.
Well, maybe contract by contract, I don't know. But usually, I don't know, if your pension's based on the highest paid five years in the last 10, and then you average this out month over month versus the big payout at the end. I don't know if that'll affect a, a person's pension or not, so.
We would have, if we ever implement this, we would have to invest, investigate it. I'm just recommending that we, enough people brought it up as an issue in the retreat that I thought we should have it on here to at least investigate, have a solve, how to solve the problem. Cause there is a problem, there's, there, like Savannah said, some people end up right then and there, once they get that lump sum, they take two weeks of vacation. Whether they, whether they had planned it or not, in order to not lose their carryover.
And I would have to imagine that doing it this way would also give us a little bit of respite with regards to paid family medical leave. Because that's another one of those things that you can't budget for. So if we're doing it this way, instead of one lump sum, all, you know, it, it's a drop. It might even affect how, have a positive impact on all the paid family medical leave that we would have to pay throughout the year.
Yeah. But I'm just recommending we at least investigate it. And we also investigate, the other, there is review the caps. Because everyone, regardless of whether they've been here 25 years or two years, have the same cap. And that might be something to help solve the issue. Is it, but, is it budget saving? No, but it might be time-saving and, you know, improve a, a benefit. So.
Okay.
So we at least investigate it and bring it back. Are there any other items on the list? I just gave them to you so I could, we could talk about it again next week. If you want, have time to tell me if there's something on there. No, we don't want.
They all look like good ideas and every little bit added up.
Yeah. The, when we looked at, we just did a preliminary estimate on if you looked at mileage, airfare, meals, what was the other one? And, well, that one was, anyway, it looks like, you know, if we reduce those, start trying to reduce those, which is one of the suggestions, and limit it to those positions that they require, at least for this biennium, you know, because of, because of economic downturns that we're seeing. Maybe could be reinstituted, but at least looking at cutting those for right now. And that was one of the suggestions that came out of the retreat. Cutting travel, training and just limiting it to positions that need their certification. So it was a, it was a good chunk. It was about, it was a little over $100,000 that we could reduce our budget. And then in training, another $100,000 possibly. So. But I'll bring this back next time and if there's, if you wanna digest it and think about it and tell me. But we'll start invest, we'll start preliminarily investigating all of these. And I think that was it, what I wanted to bring up today miscellaneous. And like I said, we're starting our budget calendar. Budgets are due from the departments, August 11th. We will have a preliminary revenue and expenditure budget for you on September 2nd. And then we start our workshops right after that.
Good.
So, but you're gonna hear lots of budget stuff from me in the future.
Tis the season.
Tis the season. Thank you.
Thank you. I had one, a miscellaneous item, my finance committee was last Thursday. I just took some notes. Of course, you can always get any of this from Deborah, but I just thought I'd share some of the highlights. We teamed up with this group called GPA in 2022. Deborah presented that, to team up with them. And their government portfolio advisors is what the GPA stands for. And it, it's been a good, good marriage so far. Since our total bank yield as, at the end of 630. First off, we, we keep, we still keep about 35% of our funds in, in, in the pool funds with the state of Washington, which is basically, she describes it as kind of a checking account. It's, it's just there. So, and then we invest the other 65%. We try to keep it, our average maturity right around a year. Right now, we're about 1.03 to what we do. Our yield at the end of June for our portfolio is 4.44%, which is pretty decent. We have a balance in that account right now of about 435.6 million at, at the end of June. And that's up from last year, we were about 408.6. And we make about 1.6 a month in interest, in earnings off of that account. I think Deborah could, I'm sure she, if you wanted to sit in a meeting, you could certainly do that and listen to the advisors talk. But I think they've done a good job for her. I know their contract is coming up at the end of this year and she'll present to us if we want to extend it. But those are just some highlights I, I wrote down in case you were interested. It just kind of shows, I think she's doing a great job with that. Anything else? Why don't we take a?
Oh, RT.
You know, today, if it's okay, I'd like to take a recess till 10 because I have a call in and I'd like to see if I got a call back. Okay, so let's recess till 10. So let's recess till 10:00. Okay, we're back. We're here for agenda review. I see Travis there. First one on the agenda. Travis, go ahead.
Good morning. Travis Soski, I'm the director of IT. We are proposing to replace computers during our annual refresh. And there are roughly 68 computers up for refresh because they've been around for roughly five years. And we're in the process of procuring them. And we'd like to move forward with that. The procurement for that is going to be roughly a hundred ninety thousand dollars. And I brought it here to see if there are any questions about that process or that procurement.
We've already budgeted for that, Travis?
We have, and the majority of those are, are like roughly 45 or 50 of those are from the sheriff's office and they're ruggedized devices. And that's kind of a special procurement. They come out of a special fund that was set aside. So yes, we have.
Normal routine. I'm going to bring it up because I, I don't know why it was dropped. I'm trying to get an answer why it was dropped. You had a, a contract request on here with a group. The group you had on here, wasn't that a group we already did some business with?
Yes, correct. There was a second agenda, a second item that was proposed that I've since withdrawn. I was asked to bring that to review with legal. And so before that proceeds, I think there may have been some confusion and discussions with procurement about the process. And so I was going to go through that and have some of those discussions in the coming week. We have already contracted with that vendor for that product for a limited short term rate, for a short term basis. We're now talking about using that product, which we had for the use of 90 days for the next year. And that's what that other contract would be for, and that would replace an existing product that we're using today. But this is a more widely recognized product in the industry.
This is a better product and the product we're replacing is it, when's our contract due on that?
The contract that, that we're replacing is due before the end of this month. So we have roughly a week before that contract is over. So it's a very short lead time.
Okay. I'll just say it. I would suggest if they have a problem with it, that that's a, that's a deal they deal with us on. There's no reason we can't approve the, working with this company subject to contract approval. We do that quite often where we approve something, then we run it through and make sure the contract meets all the, all the standards before we actually sign it. So I would be hesitant to, if we're replacing a superior product with an inferior, we're replacing an inferior product with a, a, a superior product that we already have 90 days of history on, I would suggest that that goes on the agenda next week. I, I probably would have never pulled it this week. But I would suggest that that goes on the agenda next week. If there's big heartburn, they need to work with the commissioners to, to figure that out. Okay?
Thank you. Understood.
Hey Travis, just for the public sake and for our sake, with the security issue that we had before that we procured those two contracts with in that emergency status, can you bring us up to date on, on that that took place and where we're at with it?
Sure. Because some of that is of a, of a sensitive nature, I'll just summarize to say that, you know, we previously brought to board's attention and others that we had suspicious network activity roughly a couple of months ago. At that time, we procured the services of two specialists to help us threat hunt and manage that incident. In doing so, we found that the activity that we were first identified as suspicious was activity that we didn't have to be concerned about and that we've since been able to manage and, and somewhat ignore. However, during that investigation, we found evidence of another incident, which basically compromised our, our environment. There was no data loss as far as we know, but that was since remediated and mitigated as, as far as we can tell. And so engaging the vendors was still very helpful and very beneficial because we identified issues before they were, they were allowed to get worse. So I'm, hopefully that summary is a little bit vague, but hopefully that was sufficient. I don't know if there's any additional questions about that.
So the original reason that we went to those vendors, you said it ended up being, it wasn't nefarious at all? It was benign?
That's correct. It, it was, it was suspicious activity, but it was caused by a security appliance. And the security appliance was doing what it should do. But in observing the activity of that, that security appliance, it looked like it was malicious activity to us. And at that point in time, we started investigating after weeks of investigation by internal experts. We couldn't identify or correlate that with the security appliance. And that's when we decided that it was appropriate. As we saw that activity escalate or increase, we thought that that was a good reason to engage an expert to help us understand that further.
So have we taken measures to make sure that whatever caused that to happen to where it looked like it was nefarious is no longer, we prevented that from happening again?
That specific activity, we now understand more. And so, yes, we have taken measures. We, we've taken a number of measures since that event. And since that initial investigation to improve our overall security, identified many more where we can continue working. So yes, we have identified that specific activity. And we now know to, to ignore it basically and separate it from other traffic, which would be worth investigating further.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if it's Doug Jensen from the prosecutor's office. If I could interject here, I don't mean to take up your time.
No, you can interject.
Thank you, chairman. So with regard to our recommendation to pull that agreement, we've met with purchasing this morning. There appears to be somewhat of a misunderstanding or disconnect between purchasing and, and IT. And when our office was made aware of this through its own, I guess for lack of better words, seeing it on the agenda, we did make an inquiry. Without going into detail, I strongly recommend that it stay off the agenda. It's the nature of a services agreement. There are issues as to presenting it to the board at this time. And I'm not going to go into detail. I can, I can bring, this doesn't seem to be the time and place for that to go into long detail. We're going to work with Travis to try to get this on, back on the agenda as soon as practicable. But I think that's in the best interest of both county and, and certainly in concert with our procurement policies.
Can we not approve things subject to approval of contract?
And you'll have to rephrase that for me, chairman. I'm not sure I understand it.
What? Can we not approve the movement to this vendor services subject to approval of the I's being dotted and the T's being crossed and all the questions being answered?
Well, you're, you're approving the agreement with the vendor at, at your level. So what should be coming before you is a consensus understanding of both the county and the vendor as to exactly the four corners of the scope of, and nature of the agreement that everyone's agreeing to. So what needs to happen in the coming week is, or if there are more complications, for the parties to reach a mutual understanding of what exactly is being agreed to and all the terms and conditions.
But you may have, I may ask you to discuss if you want to do it offline, that's fine. I, I just need some, because we, we've contracted with this vendor already. So I'm trying to figure out what we missed the first time that, that now we're excited about.
Well, it's, it's not, every time you contract with a vendor, particularly for services, and depending on the type of agreement you're signing, you're revisiting it all over. In other words, every time you get your oil changed, you sign a new agreement to get your, with that business to get your oil changed, even though it's the same surface. So what's required here is to make sure everybody understands that we're, and the proper paperwork is in place, that there's the same terms and conditions separate from their standard boilerplate or master agreement that everyone's on okay with. And I understand this is also what's called a piggybacking agreement, which is because of the nature of the services, it hinges off of another public bidding entity. But we have to make sure that we fit within the four corners of that agreement as well. So that's our recommendation. That's why we made the recommendation. It still stands. I'm not going to tell the board how to approach. Um, I'm not going to tell the board how to approach. But we will give advice on what we think is, again, within the best interest of the county and in compliance with county policies.
Yeah, and and we appreciate that. I
I understand that.
I I I do. I just, I it's hard for me to understand how something's changed so much in ninety days that that it just gets pulled. I guess I'm a little surprised that uh, I I I would ask for a call, I guess, Doug, or I think some explanation.
Actually, one of the things I I indicated the board is I I'm I tried to in person presentations with the departments I work with. I got a one thirty today with building and planning. And if you're available after that around two, I will pop up and talk with you. Is that fair? Does that work?
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay. I think that's I think it's a good idea.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Also, yes.
Doug, I'm wondering, I I don't know what the complexity of of the concerns are with the contract. Is this something that you could work through and we could get it on the agenda tomorrow? Or do you need till next week?
I it it's it's out of my, that part of it's out of my wheelhouse. I know Jason met with Jessica this morning in purchasing. And I sent an email out this morning to all the three parties with this suggestion sort of laying out um, how piggybacking works and the connection. And I think, in other words, there's a pathway to follow to get from point A to point B. And I think that's how quickly we get there, it depends on on all the parties interacting timely. And I think, you know, we always hope that happens. And I I had faith at will. Me, I always have faith at will. Okay?
Thanks, Doug. I'll see you.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Travis? I'm good. Travis, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Building and planning.
Good morning, Adam Trimble, Planning Manager for Building Planning. Got a request to set a public hearing for a comprehensive plan map amendment. Uh, this is a recommendation from the Planning Commission. So the process is an applicant approaches the county requesting a map change. Uh, they have a concern or a a need. And hopefully a justification to change the rules and policies that affect their property and how it can be developed. Uh, in this case, the applicant brought their project to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission took a look at the area and decided that the logical change for this particular area would would include a few more properties. We had a property owner in the audience that was on board. And so Planning Commission recommendation is a a map change in an area north of kind of northeast of Castle Rock on the Toodle River. And then the nearest road is Kildare Road. So the original property owner uh, was asking to change from small holding to rural. And in terms of development, that that means your minimum lot size will actually go down from five acres to two acres. So if if the if the request of the property owner is granted, then at least his property uh, could be uh, split uh, three times. So one property becomes three properties. And with the recommendation of the Planning Commission, we would include uh, an additional uh, nine properties, I believe. See what it says here. Yep, additional nine properties uh, in that same change so that our comprehensive comprehensive plan map makes a little more um, sense. And with the properties owners on board. Uh, it has my support as well. I think that we can justify this change for that area, which uh, seems to have a little bit of interest in development, uh, maybe some development pressure and at least in the future that could um, support that uh, little slightly more intense development from five acre minimums to two acres. So that's that's what's on the agenda is just a request to set set a hearing for that. Uh, and then later in in August, we'll have that actual hearing and you'll get to hear the full presentation, the planning commission recommendation. Property owner will be invited, property owners plural. So that's what we have for you. Tomorrow?
He east of Castle Rock on the Toodle River?
Yeah.
Trying to figure out where Kill.
Yeah, so Corle Road is the cross street. If you come off uh, Spirit Lake Highway and you start, you make a left, you hit, start heading north and then kind of wind up towards the upper North Fork Toodle. Then um, there's a neighborhood up in there.
Got you. All right.
Yeah, we've got an area that has some family holdings. And so in the comprehensive plan terms, we we usually designate those as small holding, just recognizing that the families that hold those properties may not be interested in further subdividing, and they they're more than likely going to hold those properties. And and then we have a mixture of rural where we've seen some smaller lots and some larger lots be developed over time. And then we have some economic resource lands, mineral resources specifically that are associated with the Toodle River and just recognizing that the the sand and the the spoils that accumulate in the river can be valuable to some people. And so we have a a collection of different colors on the map that we're dealing with. And in this case, I think we can support a change for these property owners.
Okay.
So that would be um, August twelfth.
August twelfth. Okay, Adam.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works.
Good morning, Susan Eugenius County Engineer. Um, Public Works also has a call for hearing. Uh, this is a uh, amendment to the traffic code. Uh, so we, this is also something that the sheriffs would like uh, to be addressed, the sheriff's department. So we have been working with legal to amend the traffic code. When it was first written, the state set um fines for parking in no parking zones. So that is what this amendment is about. Uh, since that time, they have moved it back to the local community locals to set uh, violations uh, and fines. So this excuse me, so the proposed ordinance that we're setting the hearing for would add several new sections to the traffic code uh, that would allow the sheriff's office to uh, assess fines when you park in a no parking zone. Uh, we're proposing uh, fifty dollars for the first violation, a hundred for the second, and two hundred for the third violation. So this would just give the uh, sheriff's department the ability to fine uh, people who are parking in our no parking zones.
So the state used to identify this and now they they said you guys go ahead and identify it for yourself?
Yes.
And so that's what we're doing?
Yes, we're setting what um, we're identifying as our fines for violations.
One, and I was just looking at uh, I had a call on on noise. And so I was just looking at that ordinance and I was comparing it to, we have a city that just made a change. And and the only thing that I really noticed in there, when we set this, you you said like fifty dollars, whatever those fees are.
Right.
You're kind of stuck there. So anytime you want to change that, say ten years down the road, that doesn't make sense. Then you gotta go in and ordinance change. And what I noticed that the city use was a first fine up to the amount of such and such, second fine up to the amount. Doesn't mean they have to charge that, but it gave them some leeway to grow. So I'm just wondering if if that makes sense at all. I mean, we can talk about it during the public hearing. I just
Yeah, we can certainly have that conversation with the sheriff's department and the attorneys and see if that's a alternative method we'd like to try.
If it just it feels like it just gives a little more leeway for growth and saying, you know, no, man, fifty bucks, it's not worth my time to sit here and do this, or it's not worth the, it's it's worth for me to park here. I'll pay the fine. And take the chance of not getting caught. You know, you can look at it two different ways. Anyway. That's kind of off the topic, but.
And this is for the sheriff just to set the fines, not the zones where it is or is not parking?
Correct. The zones are set uh, separately. We held public hearings on those. So we have a current list of about a dozen places where we have areas. And we bring them forth to the board when we, before we set them. Um, we have some down in the industrial area and a few other places. I can bring you the list if you're interested. Yes.
Still remember that one. Okay.
Okay, so that will also be on August twelfth. We'll have an exciting day of hearings. Parking and code amendments. Uh, so the next item we have is Sean's item.
Good morning, Commissioner Sean Reilly, Public Works. Um, we have a call for bid for a one-time purchase of high-density polyethylene pipe, also known as HGP E-pipe. We don't want to say the big long word. Um, we have approximately seven thousand three hundred linear feet that we're looking to purchase of both eight-inch and six-inch pipe. These are for the landfill for gas well installations. So staff does the install on these. We make sure we have the material on hand. So when they do need to put something in, they're able to do that that time.
Great.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Then the final Public Works item is number four. It's the contract execution with dirt and aggregate for the twenty twenty-five guard rail project uh, in amount of two ninety-eight, nine ninety-nine. Um, this was awarded on June seventeenth. They have completed all their appropriate paperwork, including the insurance, which is why we pulled it last week. We have gotten that issue resolved. So we're ready to move forward uh, to sign the contract and get, this is the new installation.
This is the new stuff mainly up Kalama River.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Event Center. Surprised you're over here. You got nothing going on this week?
Not sure what today is, but I think my name is Kim. I'm with the Event Center. Um, tomorrow on the consent agenda, I have a right-of-way easement for um, the PUD to have their power poles on the Event Center property um, going along Washington Way. Um, this comes before you uh, because of the right-of-way or the, excuse me, uh, the entryway project. A pole needed to be moved a few feet east. And it was discovered that there was not an easement in place for utilities. So um, that's why this is before you today. Or will be tomorrow, excuse me, consent agenda. But that's um, it's, I believe it's ten feet into our property. The poles are already existing. It's nothing new. It's just putting it on paper that they can put their poles there.
How far is it getting moved?
Two feet.
Yeah.
They they put in a new pole a couple of years ago. And when they um, it didn't line up with Fifth Avenue in into our property. And so the new entryway that comes in does line up with Fifth Avenue. So it would be in the middle of the sidewalk. So it just needs to move. And in looking at that whole um, agreement that we realized there was not one. So Paul Galley with Public Works has been working with the PUD to draft this easement.
No cost to us. It's just a matter of the easement, right?
Nope, it's paperwork uh, needs to be signed and notarized.
Looks pretty simple. Okay.
Do I have to leave?
You looking for a reason to stay?
It feels really good to sit in one place. I'll see you guys later this week. Thank you.
Very first person that's asked for a reason to stay.
Thank you.
Hey, I think that unless there's anything else, I think that takes care of that. You know, if Jessica can can pop in earlier, you'll check.
On the uh, Port of Woodland, that letter of support. They're just asking us to say we support the project?
Yeah.
No strings attached, no nothing?
No, no, nothing. Just a letter of support. For a project they're working on. I think we've done some for them before. We've we've done things for Port of Kalama, I know.
Yeah, I've been attending their their readings.
So while she's working her way over here, I don't, we have any issue with doing that with Port of Woodland? Yeah. So we can do that support letter. Yeah.
They did do a good job on all those uh, that Rosemary Business Park. Looked really nice.
Yeah. So Jennifer, we'll we'll go ahead and get the a letter of support down to you on for your project down there.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. And no, there's no strings attached. We're not asking for any money. We're just asking for federal funds at this point.
We will, we will get that written up and signed and get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. There she is.
Good morning, Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I have one request. It's a follow-up request from the Clerk's Office. They're requesting to increase the step placement for their newly promoted lead deputy clerk from step three to step five, which is a five percent increase based on her job performance.
Yeah, I think we chatted about that a little bit.
Okay, thank you. And then I did have a request for an executive session, but Savannah's not here yet. So
Okay.
I think she might be on her way, but I'm not sure.
So give her a five-minute recess? Do that?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, finally, she gave me a sheet that showed the the code to use for the rodeo. I will be at the rodeo on Thursday, so I use it. And I don't even take a seat. I I usually stand over in Beer Garden just because that's where the horses and everything comes in. That's where the activity is. Not that I I'll have a beer.
I don't know where we have, I don't know if I can sit with the boss team or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess you get two tickets for each night of the rodeo and then you've got the pass that gets you into the fair.
Did you get parked over by the expo center in that little?
Yes, you got a, you got a parking code. Parking pass that's on there.
I just saw the the invitation. Sent by email and stuff like that. It's one coming back.
Yeah. Huh? On. Okay. Appreciate it, Sean.
I'm after hearing aids. If you can understand what he was saying, I only get about one out of three words. Could you understand it?
No. I heard him say Commissioner Doll and that was all I heard. I saw that.
We're back. I see the person we've been looking for got here.
Yep, she's here. So requesting an executive session for performance of a public employee. Um, let's start with five minutes. Should be relatively quick.
Okay, we will go into executive session for performance of a public employee estimated five minutes. Okay. Okay, back from executive session. No decisions rendered. I think that's all we have. We're good. Anything else for the good of the order?
I was just gonna ask. I got a couple of phone calls, uh, from Woodland, the Rotary. Did we ever find out if there were funds available for that part? I was gone last week.
Uh, we, we do have funds available and Kathy is, um, what she did before, when we did that before, we funded that 300,000 of that rural development funds. We talked a little bit about that. And she said, last time we, we asked them to do the application, go through the application process. So I believe that's what was going to happen, that they would fill the application out. And then it would get presented to us and, and, uh, then we would decide, are we okay with, I think we were talking about the 550 to get the first part open is what we were kind of looking at. And, uh, then we would, uh, make a decision if we're okay spending that money or, or not. And I know, and we've said before, and I, we reiterated, reiterated to Kathy again is we have a request from our Riverside and we don't want to forget them either because I think that's a, a good project also. They, they've gone through and gotten RCO funds and, and Savannah did have a little good news. They sold more spoils than they thought. So the amount that they may need will be a little lower, but I think we can take care of both of those things is my hope. Yeah.
So when somebody submits a request like them for 550 and we choose to only fund 300,000 of it, do they have to resubmit a whole nother application or can we just?
No, we can make the amendment, uh, when the application comes before us. Yeah.
Awesome. That's all I got.
Okay. Okay, we will adjourn. Thank you.